Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the District of Brown Deer School Board Meeting for September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. I like to call this meeting to order at six oh five P M. Um verification of public notice, it's been publicly noticed. Verification of a quorum, we have six board members in person and one person and one board member uh virtually. Uh approval of the agenda, would someone like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Dr. Beetle, I move that we um approve the agenda as presented.
All right, thank you very much. Ms. Ashley, a motion has been made. Do we have a second?
Dr. Beetle, I'll second.
Thank you very much, Ms. Peterson. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing seen on all in favor with raised hand and or eye. One, two, three, four, five, six, and seven. Motion carries unanimously seven to zero. And to our mission statement, together with our families and community, we will inspire students to be passionate learners, creative thinkers, and innovative leaders who enrich our world. All right, let's go on to item number two, our business office and facilities uh update. Uh so let's go on to A buildings and grounds. Uh Ms. Smitska.
Good evening, Board of Education. Well, Dr. Brown really created a great process for us to keep you apprised of everything that we're working on. But that doesn't necessarily cascade out to the community all the time. So what I have done in my memo is essentially taken my updates to you and put them in chronological order, and that way everybody is getting the same message. So a few things that I would just like to point out um that we have been working on over the past month, and it has been a very busy month for us um is we did a lot of our security and fire um testing throughout the district. That includes our fire alarms as well as our sprinkler systems. Uh we also had um new furniture provided um to the middle school guidance counselor. Um she's new to us. That was a position we didn't have previously, so we need to, we needed to make sure that we did have furniture for her. Um we also removed a couple of boilers from the lower, I'm sorry, boiler pumps from the lower level boiler room at the middle high school and took them into be rebuilt. Um we um we have also done the um installation of gates arms at the, at the elementary school. And while there are a few bugs that we need to work out in that system, they seem to be working very well um to help with the flow of traffic. Um not only that, but my team finished up summer cleaning and we have been um helping the teachers with any requests that they have as far as adding furniture into their spaces or removing furniture out of them. So overall, it has been an incredibly busy month. But I am very proud of the outcome um that my, and the effort that my team has put in. They did a phenomenal job over the summer and rose to the occasion as they always do. Are there any questions that I can answer?
Oh, board members, any questions for Ms. Smitska? Okay, I have one question, Jody. How are our fields and everything holding up so far uh with football and soccer and everything? How are we holding up so far?
So the football field looks amazing. Um our current ground staff has done a knockout job. We have now um started painting the Falcon back on the middle of the field. It looks beautiful. So overall, even with the dry spell, um our irrigation systems did help. Um you know, grass is going to turn brown during those spells of of heat and dryness, and thankfully now we're on the other end of that, but they have been doing very well.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other further questions? All right, thank you so much, Jody. All right, let's go on to item B, our business office update. Mr. Clinic.
Good evening, uh members of the Board of Education. Um I did provide a brief update in the uh in board, uh Doc, our board book today. A couple items just to talk about briefly. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I did want to comment on student transportation uh because I know that is a issue top of mind um all across the country frankly, but um it's been a bit of a rocky start. Um so far, we are uh working through it with with Right Way. We've had a couple of um mornings where we were uh down a driver. And so we did miss um or some of the routes were a little bit late. Um we've gone two days this week where it's been uh everything's been on time as far as I know, and so we haven't had issues. I am in contact with Right Way every morning just to kind of get a sense of what's happening with the routes to ensure that in case there, you know, a driver calls in sick. They don't have a lot of backup at this point. Um they are completing some training, so they do hope to uh to have that um uh that pool of drivers uh expand a little bit over the next several weeks. Um we are continuing to work with them to get the Here Comes the Bus app implemented, and so uh soon as we do, we'll be letting parents know that that is ready to go. And then uh the biggest piece um which uh has been shared, I think, with the board as well as um um through Mr. McGregor is just that there does continue to be a challenge with uh after-school events. Um and this is again not uh specific to Right Way. This is um all bus companies all over um southeast Wisconsin uh where they are struggling with with drivers during certain periods of time. So we um I know the athletic department has been working diligently and trying to reschedule events when possible um to push them back a little later in the evening. Um we're hopeful again that with these additional bus drivers that will allow us to get a few more buses available um in those late afternoon hours. Um we are we're obviously, we're obviously some sports like football, which are uh played under the lights at most schools. Um you know, we can work around that, but when we start getting into uh later in October, November, where it starts to get darker on fields like soccer, um we what, we need to obviously make sure that the kids can play before it gets dark. So we're going to be working through that as best as best as possible. And we are continuing as a district to look at some alternative methods of transportation as needed, whether it's including uh renting vans or um uh encouraging some parent uh transfer of uh a transportation of of students and athletes to those events. So we're working on that as well.
Good question. Yeah, relationship to this transportation. What about the, are we, are we using those uh buses that we bought, the buses, vans, buses slash vans that we bought uh a couple of years ago? Are we also utilizing those for the transportation for the extracurricular activities?
For certain events, um you know, cross-country, I believe, has used it. I mean, it's for those smaller events where it's a handful of students. Um but we have, we have used them. Uh when you get into situations with like the soccer team, uh that's more than one van, so you know, it's coordinating that. They still have been trying to to use buses when possible. Um so we are, we do use them when when it's available, and that's why one of the options we do have is perhaps even um if if Right Way can't guarantee us uh a bus during a certain period, if we have to rent a van and have a coach or someone else drive, drive that, that's another possibility for us to look at. Um so we are, we are utilizing the two vans that we have. Um but again, some, some sporting uh events and 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 teams are just too large to utilize those, but other ones that are that we we do.
Okay, well, Kevin, a question for you. Would it be, I don't know, from a cost perspective, would it be advantageous for us to potentially buy our own yellow school bus that we would just have that would be here on grounds, and if we needed to use it for extracurricular activities and things of that nature, would that be more cost-effective as well as uh better for us because we don't have to, we wouldn't have to worry about it as much? Is that, would that be something that you think that could be uh potential?
Well, it's something the district had many years ago, but I think the cost of upkeep and having uh people being able to drive it on staff was a challenge, and eventually when it, I think, when it became unserviceable, they just took it out of commission and and that was the end of it, and we did. I mean, thi- this is certainly a unique period of time right now, so I I don't know how long it's going to last if we're going to continue to have this struggle with with uh having drivers um or whether we've turned, we've hit the bottom and we've, we're turning the corner now, and and as more people are going back to work, maybe there are, we'll, we'll, we'll have a, it'll be a little easier to get it. We, we have also talked to Right Way um because, because the, the buses aren't the problem, it's the drivers. So if we had individuals on staff or if we have coaches that um have gone through the training to get their C D L license with the bus um endorsement, um Right Way would be more than happy to employ those people as bus drivers, drop off a bus, and and then our folks could drive um the buses to and from events. But again, there's training involved with that, there's time, and and people have to be willing to make that uh that investment. Um which we've talked about as well as a potential solution. I think, again, it depends on how long we think this is going to last and and how much of an inconvenience it will be um long term. So that's a pretty serious investment, I think, to talk about purchasing a bus and then having the staff, you know, around to do that, and then it still only solves, you know, it's one team you've, you've solved the problem for, but it doesn't help necessarily with the other events that are going on simultaneously. So um so this, certainly something we can look at, but I think in the short term, we're just trying to make sure we have other opportunities to get um some of our smaller teams to and from events as quickly as possible.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have any other questions for Kevin in relationship to transportation?
I have a question. Um I'm sure the vans that we do have, are, are they, can they, how, what's the capacity for that, and do they have seat belts?
Uh there are nine passenger, I believe there are nine passenger vans. Um so I, I uh I haven't actually ridden in one, but I believe they all have, it'd be a normal passenger van seat with seat belts unlike a bus, a school bus would, so.
Okay, and then you mentioned something about parents would, you, you thought that parents would transport students? Is that?
There, there is a potential in that. I mean, there are some districts uh in our conference that have basically outsourced all transportation in this air, in this time to parents. Um I don't think we're in the, we're in the situation to be able to do that, but um if that alleviates some of the pressure, you know, if we can take some kids in a van and some parent, you know, again, it depends on the sport. Um but when we're looking at things like maybe um over the winter swimming or wrestling or things like that where there's little smaller groups of of kids involved, um maybe it's something with it, we could, we could do it, and then it would prevent us from having to rent additional vans or or still rely on the bus as much as as possible. So it's certainly something we we would look at. Um and again, and I think uh Mr. McGregor is always in contact with coaches and and then the coaches are in contact with families, so that if that is an opportunity, we would certainly explore it.
Thank you.
Okay, and again, if you, if, uh I would encourage anyone, if you do hear of things, transportation related, um you know, we are working through the issues as they go, but feel free to reach out to me um and and let me know, because I, I'm obviously not uh in front of the schools uh every morning and every afternoon, making sure that the buses are here and that, but I do hear from Right Way when I know there are problems, and I want to make sure that if there are other issues that crop up, I'd like to know, so. Um then the next item I have on the update is just a uh a short uh update on our Medicaid reimbursement um project that we were working on, and I did update this uh earlier today. So if you did look at it over the weekend, there is a little more verbiage um in the version that's posted now on Board Book, but basically, we uh Dara and I have met with a couple of different uh vendors, and we've come to decide on working with a company called Go Solutions, which is the parent company of the software that we use to manage um our special education students and staff, so uh called Oasis. So we'll be, we'll be going with them to uh to help us through our Medicaid reimbursement. And one of the things that I, I, again, I'm our Medicaid reimbursement, one of the things that um I'm learning are that there are a variety of different um types of Medicaid reimbursement. Now, we've been getting uh, we did receive about eighty thousand dollars from Medicaid this past year, but that was um under what's known as Medicaid Administrative Claiming or MAC, which is really nothing that the district has to do. It's based on um previous year claims, and it's basically an, an opportunity to to recoup some of the overhead costs. So uh in kind of, we're working with our auditors, we were kind of aware of the differences here, and so we uh I I looked back and I saw that we really haven't done any um school-based service claims, which are the ones that you're actually looking at um staff members working with students to provide specific activities. So we haven't really done any claiming for that, and that was something I heard from our predecessor that we didn't, we haven't really taken advantage of Medicaid is probably as, 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 as good as we could and and claim as much revenue as we could. So uh my original version of the memo was kind of talking about the cost and related to eighty thousand dollars. Um that, that MAC reimbursement portion of of Medicaid is something that would happen, and there's no cost for us. That's something that's going to happen in the background anyway. So really, when we're talking about some additional expenses, it's talking about adding the ability of doing those school-based service claiming. So we're, we are looking at that every single claim we're able to um, we're able to make uh will be increased revenue for the district, and that's another advantage of this company. So so in using a company like this, we're going to be, and I kind of summarized in the last paragraph, it's really A to make sure that we have, we're in compliance with all of the Medicaid regulations, making sure our staff is certified, everything's, everything is done correctly, so that if we're ever audited by the federal government, we have all the records and everything is ready to go. Um we will be able to do that school-based services claiming, so we'll see an increase in our revenue there. And then they will be able to also look at us and support us and try to identify if there's any other Medicaid revenue that may be available through services that we may not be currently offering. So uh we expect this to be a win-win. It's a very small price to pay for the additional support, and so we're going to move forward with that over the next um several weeks, and uh so hopefully by the end of next year, we'll see an increase in our Medicaid um claiming. Any questions on that? Okay, then, if not, we'll move on to the, the last item in the memo which flows into the next uh item um on the agenda, which is our uh my request for the um approval of the resolution to um to approve and authorize temporary borrowing. And I, I give you a brief history of it in in the memo, just kind of explaining the fact that um with the way that school districts finances are uh are, or how the, the revenue and expense streams are. Um we're now in our, we're getting, we're approaching our low point of the year where we don't get tax revenue until January. We'll get a little bit of state revenue um in October, but for the most part, um we're going to be spending more than we're taking in from now until the end of the year. And so most school districts uh do require some sort of short-term borrowing to to bridge that gap, to make sure you're making payroll and everything like that. So um so over the years, uh and uh Lisa will remember this, when we started on the board, we were borrowing over four million dollars a year. Um and then all of the years that we've been able to increase our fund balance, that's provided us with more money, so that required less um, more money to tap into during that, that portion of the year, which allows us um the ability to, to, to um borrow less. So we've slowly decreased. Uh we were at two point three million dollars um last year. So here's the, the scarier part for me was that as a new business manager and and new to paying attention to this level of detail in the district, um our financial advisor, P M A, did uh come through with, uh looked at my budget, looked at the uh our um annual report to date from the, from the auditors of how our previous fiscal year ended. And they are actually predicting that we may not need to borrow at all. Now, the thing is May, so um because I would like to sleep at night for the next four months or so. Um uh and because the, uh they've also switched. Um they used to do, the, in previous years, uh P M A was issuing um uh tax, uh tax-free bonds, so they were government bonds, and and because they were tax-free, there were more restrictions on those bonds and how much a district could borrow based on their needs. So you, you had to fall within a very narrow window. This year, um P M A feels like, I think because of some of the uncertainty with maybe some of the districts. And again, this is a program that there are, I believe, uh sixteen districts that are participating in, so we're just one of them where we're all pooling our assets together basically, and 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 they're issuing these notes in, in a, in a lump sum. Um uh we are able to borrow really whatever we feel we need to, and so in in discussions with them to provide us with um some pad, um uh we are, and we've decided to um seek a borrow of one million dollars. So again, this, we're, we may not use any of it, but again, as a, as a safety measure, and because of the fact too um with cash flow, it really, it's really going to be um important that we are claiming our federal money as quickly as we can. Some of our S R dollars, while we'll be getting the S R dollars, um a lot of it's going to be tied to salary, so that's something I'm only going to be able to claim you know, on a quarterly basis, so it's not like I can do a lump sum um and get a, a ton of money upfront. So uh so we feel like this is a, an appropriate amount to give us some pads so that we should be able to, or we will be able to uh make it through our low point until our December or January um uh main tax payment will come through from the village. So, so that's the reason we do this, and uh the costs are relatively small. The um the estimate, and it may come in a little under this, is uh is seventy basis points or about seven thousand dollars to borrow the million dollars for a year. Are there any questions about the short-term borrowing process or um or this particular borrow in particular?
Um Kevin, quick question. If we, so if we've got the million dollars, is it almost kind of like we just have it sitting there? Uh and if we don't use it, then we don't have to pay the, pay back the seven thousand dollars, or it's the seven thousand dollars regardless whether we use it or not?
Yeah, it is a seven thousand dollars regardless of whether we use it or not. Um I will just say that uh I, if everything goes as we're predicting, I think next year I would strongly look at a line of credit. Um the issue came down to um the timing of me completing the budget, and then almost right away, P M A was looking at the budget for cash flow purposes. And so I didn't have time. I did reach out to BMO, uh which is one of our main financial institutions, to see how quickly they could come up with an idea, so I would know what it would cost to do the line of credit piece, because there are charges to set that up. Obviously, you only pay interest when you borrow money, and then you can pay it back as soon as you want to. I think it's something I would look at strongly next year. I just, in order to participate in the P M A program, I just didn't have a lot of time to, to do that, and so I figured, well, it's a small amount of money. It's, it's not a huge expense at this point. Um and they did the cash flow analysis, so I, I, I feel comfortable working with them in that respect. Um but next year, with more lead time over the summer, I would certainly start looking at um other options, especially if we would have another year where we'd add the fund balance, and we would expect that um cash flow. And especially as we look at our cash flow, if we never drop below a million dollars in our bank account, then we know we, we certainly could make it through the year without um without borrowing. So we could, then the line of credit would make more sense, I think.
All right, so the seven thousand dollars, are we going to pull the seven thousand, is it going to come out of fund ten?
That, yeah, it does, it's an interest expense, you know. Uh last year, I think we spent, we, last year with two point three million, I think we paid almost twenty thousand dollars in costs to that, because there are because of the nature of this, because we're, we are a um, a government entity issuing these notes, uh there's a bond council, there are, there's all these other layers of um legal review and financial uh assistance as required to, to the selling, the sale of the bonds, and then uh all of the maintenance involved in, in making sure the interest payments are made to the, the borrowers and things like that. So um so that's, that's the really the cost plus the interest piece. So if the interest comes in uh below what they're predicting, then it might actually be lower than that. They're kind of looking at that as like a worst-case scenario.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions for Kevin? Uh go ahead, Ms. Peterson.
Um hi, Kevin. Kevin, you and I met and and talked about this, and we're both in agreement that this was a good move on the school's part. One thing I didn't is, and as I'm continuing to learn here, one thing that I failed to ask when we did meet was, can you talk about the payback of this and how that actually works? When would these funds actually be due?
Uh. Right, there is a, there's a statute that um prevents districts from having uh two of these kind of short-term borrows simultaneously, so we have to pay back our two point three million dollar uh one, and I believe the deadline is, is around November first. So, so basically what P M A will be doing is they're going to go out and sell. Um they'll market the bonds over the next several weeks. Um we'll get uh a commitment to a particular price. Uh there'll be a day where we will take two point three million dollars out of our bank account, and they will pay off our previous loan, and then, you know, within a day or two, we'll get a million dollars dropped back in, which will be the proceeds from the sale. And then we hold on to them for, we, we'll be holding on to them for a year. Other districts are, are borrowing in, in some pockets um just to make sure they can, you, you can pay it off whenever you want to and borrow it for a short term, but I thought, again, at this price, I wasn't going to try to uh work too tight of a schedule. I thought we'll just have the million for the year and and, and having gone, once I go through that budget cycle once, I'll feel much more comfortable um uh knowing what our fund balance is and and how it actually um, how our cash will actually run. So I'll, I'll be able to feel more comfortable next year.
Great, thank you, Kevin.
Any other questions for Kevin?
I do have a question just for clarity sake and putting the pieces all together. Um so are we not able to maybe pay back one point three and then keep a million of what we already have? Or does it have to be a whole new transaction?
It, it is a whole new transaction uh because of the way the, the statutes work. If we did a line of credit, then it would be a separate situation. We might be able to have that line open for multiple years and only borrow in pockets and 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 keep it open, much like a home equity line of credit would be for, for people with their homes. But the way these are set up, uh these are uh specific interest rates being paid to borrowers. There's a, there's a, there's a redemption period where, where we um we pay them back with interest, and then they get their money, and then we'll be issuing uh bonds to potentially other people um to get the, the million. So it's, these are coming from different sources, really.
Okay.
Any other questions for uh Kevin?
Yeah, I just have one other question, and that has to do with, so the sec, the, the, the one million that we're borrowing, that will come to, or when we pay that back, when?
A year from now, October of twenty twenty-two.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
And if anybody wants to see the entire offering document, uh I haven't, I didn't include it because it's like fifty pages long. It does include all of the other districts that are involved. Um Glendale River Hills is one of them um as a neighbor, but they're all over the state that are participating in this program that G M A runs, and so it's something that we've done for several years um working with them, so that's, it's safe. It, it, it's a, it's a good, it's been a good program, I think, to, to have, and it's been competitive in interest rates. So it, uh again, with the amount we're borrowing and the amount of cost, it, it, it felt like a no-brainer to, to pursue that just to have some safety.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions for Kevin? All right, would someone like to make a motion or the, or we'd have to go into our roll call vote?
So I'll make a motion uh to approve the resolution authorizing temporary borrowing in the amount to, not to exceed one million dollars uh issuance of taxable tax and revenue anticipation promissory notes in participation in the P M A uh levy and aid anticipation notes program, as presented this evening.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, uh Ms. Ashley. Uh we have a motion on the floor. We have a second. Yep. Our second?
Yes, our second.
Okay, thank you very much. Motion's been made and seconded.
Was that Nicole? I just wanted, was that Nicole that seconded?
That was Nicole.
Thank you.
Okay, um all in favor? Okay, do we need to make this as a roll call vote?
Yes, we need to do it as a roll call vote, please.
Okay. I think you're muted, Doreen.
All right, Beetle?
Aye.
Uh, I'm sorry, I shouldn't try to do the alphabetical by memory. Daniels, Ashley?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Robinson, aye. Smith?
Aye.
Zick?
Aye.
And Zaleski?
Aye.
All right, motion carries unanimously seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
All right, let's go on to our next item, item number three, uh engaged learners uh in A, item A is first weeks of school. Dr. Kelsey Brown?
Good evening, board members. We are happy to be um back in, in-person learning, um maximizing um our classrooms, and our staff and students are happy to be back in our buildings. Um things are going well, as we know with the first few weeks of school. Um there are always some, um, some things that need to be ironed out, and that just comes with on the process of learning and um understanding where we need to pivot um and make adjustments as we continue to move forward. So again, we're happy to have everyone back in the buildings, and I want to say thank you to board members who came out um to celebrate with us on the first day of school, to receive our students uh back into our buildings at the middle high school and on the playground at the elementary school. It was great weather that day and a great day to see all of our uh smiling faces behind the facial coverings, come back on the, on the first day of school. Um we are, uh Mr. Garrison and I continue to meet with uh building principals to support them um in their efforts to continue to plan um as we ensure a high-quality teaching and learning experience for our students. I do want us all to be mindful of the fact that um when our schools were shut down, March thirteenth, twenty twenty, we have, um I'll just use our sixth graders as an example. Um some of our sixth graders have not seen a school building since fourth grade. So we know and understand we are getting students re-acclimated uh to be, to being back in buildings. Um that's uh some of our returning students, that's our returning students as well as students who are new to the school district of Brown Deer as we continue to teach them the Brown Deer way. Um we continue to um focus on our S E L work under the leadership of Mrs. Antandari and her S E L team. Um so that plan has been laid out. As Kevin mentioned earlier, uh we did have um a few um glitches in busing uh on the first day with uh anywhere from students not knowing their bus numbers. Uh students were dropped off in the morning, they got picked up in the afternoon, wasn't sure about the bus number, so um the principals were great um with that in uh securing the list for the students with their bus routes and their bus numbers to make sure they um were able to get on the appropriate bus. Um we did get our exercise on that first day uh of school. We're getting kids where they need to, needed to be. Um we continue to implement um our COVID mitigation um protocols um to the greatest extent possible. Again, our goal is to keep everyone safe and healthy uh in the midst of this experience. Um we are also uh continuing to plan around, um you'll hear from Mr. Garrison very shortly as it relates to um the extension of the distance learning process for our students here in the Brown, in the school district of Brown Deer in the event um that virtual learning is necessary for our students. Uh we are also, we also continue with the KILL partnership where we have about twelve families um who are part uh of that experience. So things are going um well for the first couple of weeks, and um we will continue to move forward with doing our very best to keep our students um in in-person learning, maximize our efforts with the KILL experience. Um recognizing that um the evi- inevitable at this point, um as we have just learned in the last few weeks, is um quarantines and isolate, quarantining and isolating um students and staff is still a part of what we're experiencing um this year. I will also share our experience this year is slightly different from previous school district because if you recall, last year we started out virtual for the first three weeks and then we slowly phased our kids back in. So our real true 100% for the most part in-person learning is in years, is, is this year in the midst of this COVID experience. So things are going well. Our principals and assistant principals are working very hard. Our teachers are working hard at putting those seating charts, implementing seating charts in their classrooms so that we can continue to contact trace in the manner in which we need to do that under Ms. Farrington's leadership, our school district nurse. So things are happening around here. We, we continue to move forward again with in-person learning here in the district. And if there are any questions I can answer regarding the first weeks of, first weeks of school, please feel free to ask.
Any questions for Dr. Kelsey Brown?
Yes, I, I have a question. Um, I don't know.
I'm sorry. Who was, who was this?
I'm in the corner right there. Give me one second. Let me turn this thing off.
Uh, no, actually this is only for board members only. I'm sorry.
Excuse me?
Uh, board members only, uh, uh, board members only to be able to ask questions. I'm sorry. This is not, this is not open meeting for, for residents to be able to ask questions. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Dr. Beetle. And may I also add, technology, just want to give a quick shout out to Mr. Garrison and Ms. Turner with the technology team as Chromebook distribution has also started on this weekend. That's also a massive undertaking in making sure all of our students and families have Chromebooks in the event that we need to return to a virtual experience.
Okay. All right. Board members, any questions for Dr. Kelsey Brown?
I have a quick question. I know that just as far as food service, they, they were making such big changes for this year. Have those gone smoothly? They reported earlier in the summer, just some changes that they were doing. I was just wondering about how food service is going with lunch.
I think they're obviously getting used to having as many kids in the building as, as we have had this year. So I think there, there have been a few minor service issues, but they are working on implementing all of the things that we talked about. But I've heard for the most part, it's been going pretty well. I know that, I think one day we had an issue where the elementary school ran out of a particular entree, which in the beginning of the year, it's always tough to gauge, you know, which ones the kids are going to gravitate toward. But we are, we, I mean, I'm in contact with, with Airmark regularly, but I think for the most part, it's been going pretty well.
Did you sit on this?
Were you, you finished with your question? I'm sorry. Oh, okay. All right. All right. Uh, board members, any other further questions for Dr. Kelsey Brown? All right. Thank you very much. All right, Dr. Kelsey Brown. Can, let's go to item B, our 2021-22 enrollment update.
Celebration. Just really quickly, I wanted to provide community, the community with an update around enrollment. I'll just give you the overall numbers and then Mr. Climb will come behind me and share with you how we have to continue. Well, first of all, we gotta go for third Friday count and then our open enrollment out, how that formula works. But generally speaking, total enrolled in the district at this, across all three buildings, 1,688 students. So that is definitely, I would say since I've been here, that's the highest number of students I've seen in our district in my short tenure here. And so that is definitely a celebration as we continue to move forward. Now, with that being said, I am going to turn it over to Kevin and he can share with you what comes behind just that overall number because there are still some pieces that we have to factor in.
Why is there always, why is there always a but when it be good news? I'm sorry.
It's good news.
Well, no, there's, there is good news. Obviously, when we started the, the budget process in this experience year, we had no idea what to predict. I did predict a flat enrollment and so we were at, I think we were at 1490 something last year. So the fact that we are approaching 1,700, that's a fairly significant increase any given year that we've, that we've had. We've been declining enrollment for, for, for a few years before that. So, so this is good news. We do have some, some decent sized numbers at some of the classes. So we are continuing to look at that. That's, that is the trade-off is you get to the point where you have more kids. And so it is, it has created a few more challenges. I think we talk about bussing, when you talk about food service. You know, we went from last year where half the kids were here all year and now we are at a point where we have 200 kid, almost 200 more kids than we did a year before. So, so we're going through that. But the, the, the news is good. What it does mean from us for, from a revenue standpoint, and I, I can't be exact yet because again, as, as Dr. Kelsey Brown mentioned, there is a part of the equation where we remove the students that are open and rolling in and when we add the students that are open and rolling out and I don't have any sense of the open rollout and I won't until October 15th. But right now with these numbers, using our same estimates, we are looking at about $400,000 in increased revenue authority that we, we did not think we would have. So that's good news and that's part of that discussion I had about, you know, pairing back some of that ESSER funds potentially to do. Now we may need to add, we'll have to look at staffing in certain areas and make sure that we're not, we don't have a grade level where we're, we're, we're a little pinched and we need to, to look at that. So we'll continue to, to examine that. And again, as we mentioned, the third Friday count is this Friday. So that'll be the official number we'll have and I will share that at the annual meeting, whatever data we have at that point. But again, our budget and the levy is all based on what you approved a month ago. So that's more of an update just to let you know where we're headed. And that will be reflected in October, but wouldn't be reflected next week when we get to the annual meeting. But it is good news. I'm not, I'm not coming in with any bad news on that.
Sounds good. Sounds good. All right. That sounds good. Anybody have any questions for, for Kevin? Or Dr. Kelsey Brown in relationship to enrollment? Excellent news. I just think that's just a testament to our district and our teachers and our families being happy with the, the, the product that we're providing and our facilities and everything and stuff. So excellent work, team. Excellent work to be able to bring these numbers to where we are. So now we just got to wait on third count Friday. All right. Let's go on to item number C, our Brown Deer District Learning Process. Mr. Garrison?
Thank you, members of the board and Dr. Beetle. First of all, I'd like to give a huge shout out to all of our, to the team that helped put this, the, the information that I'm about to share with you tonight, whether it be from the technology department to our building principals to Kevin Climate, Adara, the entire school district really leaned in heavily to make sure that we had a plan in place in case we need to go to a distance learning platform. And so as we, as we continue to navigate the pandemic, we must note that many changes that will need to be considered if we move to a distant learning platform. Of course, we know that dependent, that, that, that the pandemic or the experience as we, as we say, has affected many aspects of our learning experience, but it's also given us the opportunity to be innovative in educating all students. As a school district, we want to maximize our learning around Google Classroom with the understanding that if we maximize the learning around the Google Classroom with our teachers, that it will directly impact the learning with our students and our families. This year, we will use a similar setup as last year in event of classroom, school and/or district closure. Our teachers will focus on lesson planning. I want to make sure that that's something that I put out to our entire school community. Lesson planning is our primary structure that will impact learning. We know that with a proper lesson plan in place, you'll be able to execute excellent lessons. We, I've already stated these conversations in our district meetings this year, that engagement will be a focus both during in-person learning and both in virtual learning as well. And so it's very important to know that we have two different scenarios, actually more than two different scenarios, but in the presentation that I sent out to all staff members and of course to the district and to our families, we have classroom closure procedures and then we will have school and our district closure procedures. In the event that there is a classroom closure, our students who are in quarantine will need to use our Google Classroom. And so what you will hear me say a lot in this presentation is that our Google Classroom will be where we house the learning opportunities for our students asynchronously during a classroom closure. If we, in any event that we have to do a school and/or district closure, those conversations will look a little different. We will need a two-day window to make sure that we have everything in place for our students and our families to, to really maximize our school and our district closure learning time. So please note that we will have materials and instructional technology being shared with you during that timeframe. If you have needs during that timeframe, we will communicate the opportunities in which you can let us know that information, of course, and then turn around and be able to give you that, give you the technology that you may need during this time. Now my team, I should say the district's team, has already started to really get out the Chromebook conversations and make, make sure that our families have that in place already before these events possibly happen. Now naturally, we have some littles down in the BDE that haven't gotten all their technology just yet because right, this week was our week to plan out, giving out all of our technology to our students. We of course wanted to, to have all this information and of course wanted to have all the computers into the hands of all of our kids, but we also had a backlog from the storm that happened over the past two weeks. And so with that being said, some of our stuff hadn't gotten here yet and which put us in a different window in which we can actually deliver the materials to you. So in the event, again, going back to a classroom closure, the number one place we should go back to will be a Google Classroom. In the event of a school and/or district closure, where all of our parents and our teachers know to, to report back to again, will be the Google Classroom. There will be a, a change in our schedules as it pertains to the start and end times in the event that we have a school and/or district closure. We'll move back to a schedule in which we kind of worked from last year. We know that being online all day is just real tough and we believe that the structure that we had in place last year with the virtual learning opportunity happening from nine to two o'clock was a great window for us in our school district. In the event, again, that our district has a closure, our whole district will move to that starting end time similar to what we had last year when we started school when we were the first three weeks of school last year that like Dr. Brown mentioned, we were a nine to a two o'clock timeframe for our students. So parents, please understand that we know that this is a very hard thing to navigate. We are doing everything that we can to keep, I like to say, students in school, but we know that the experience has given us certain things that we have to work through as pertains to the CDC guidelines in which we have followed very closely over this past year and a half now. And so again, in, in event that we have to close a school and/or a district, we will move to a different timeframe in which we will make sure that all of this information will be communicated with, to you by both the school district and/or the buildings. Please take note at the schedule that we share with you as well over the weekend and as well to the board. The schedules that Brown Deer Elementary has and the schedules that the middle school has and the schedule that the high school has should be something that we kind of follow. There will be a need to pivot in certain situations, but please note that if we have to do that, we will communicate those changes with all of our families as soon as we need, as soon as we know there may need to be that change. And so with that being said, again, this information has been shared with the entire school community and of course with our board. And at this time, I would like to say, I would actually turn it over to Kara just for a brief moment, just to share where we are with our Chromebook distributions and then I'll take it from there and turn it over to the board. Mrs. Turner?
Absolutely. Thank you. So we are working this week to, to get out our devices to the middle school and high school students. So Monday, we distributed the middle school devices. Today, we did the sophomore, juniors and seniors. We had, as Mr. Garrison explained, an issue with getting our cases in. So Hurricane Irene created a, a bunch of problems for us. So we are expecting a shipment of cases tomorrow and then we will have our freshmen have their Chromebooks. We know that there are students in quarantine, both at the middle high school as well as the elementary school. So we sent out a Sky Alert today. I am a team, I have a team of four. I think I would need about double or triple the staff to be able to meet all the needs that we have, especially at the accelerated rate in which we are, we find ourselves in. I think we had hoped that we had, would be a little bit quicker, but in the reality, in terms of just our timeline, everything is just seems to be getting pushed back a little bit. So our goal is for all of our families, K-12, to have access to a learning device. We have those devices. It's just a matter of the rollout. We started at the high school. We're rolling down our families in quarantine at the middle high school. We'll have an opportunity to pick up devices tomorrow starting tomorrow afternoon. And then my team and I are working on looking at the data. So we asked families to register for, during registration. And then when we were at picture day, we aggregated a bunch of data. We collected it so that we would have a sense of families' access to devices as well as access to internet. We're going to be pulling that data, looking at the numbers tomorrow and gathering those lists so that we can come up with a plan. First tier is obviously the quarantine students. And then after that, it then would be families who do not have access to extra devices at, at home that require a district device in order for learning to take place. So again, this goal is not only to meet the needs of those students who should find themselves in quarantine or, or in case of a district closure, but it's also again, an opportunity to give students and families access to technology so that they can continue their learning. So an unfinished learning that might take place. So I feel like by the end of this week, we'll have either a, a very good understanding in terms of the timeline. As you know, my colleague, Andy Hayes, works with Sharonda to, you know, to kind of help with the backend systems and the dashboards. We need to, she's going to be speaking later to this, I would imagine, about the quarantine guidelines, but our dashboard is a little inaccurate. So we're going to have a better understanding tomorrow and Thursday as well as those stu, of those students who, who either need to stay in quarantine beyond what we believe might be Tuesday or might be Thursday. So, so our goal is to, to get those devices out as quickly as possible. So we'll be almost done at the middle high school by Thursday and then we'll be able to direct all of our efforts and energies on getting devices out at the elementary school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. And then of course, we also have a conversation around food distribution. Of course, if there's a situation where there's a school and/or district closure, we will be, still be able to provide meals for our students. And that information was also shared with our parents and of course in our district update as well. And so I would like to turn it over to the board for any questions. Thank you, team.
All right. Board members, any, any questions? Yes, Ms. Robinson?
I just wanted to ask, can, can you just talk us through the notification process when there is a potential quarantine or a shutdown for the students?
Sure, I can touch on it.
I mean, and Ms. Farrington is on with us this evening too. So that'll be part of her discussion when we talk about quarantine guidelines. Ms. Robinson. Item number E or letter, letter E.
Uh, any other further questions?
So this may also be for the district nurse too, in terms of the threshold, particularly when we were talking about our having to pivot to closure mode. What is the, the threshold that we're looking at in terms of the district and making that decision to close if we have to?
Yes, and that conversation will also be touched on in Mrs. Farrington's conversation, but I just want to note, like I said, it's never our goal to get to that point. If we have to, it'll be definitely something that our district will have to make a decision on. I will say that Dr. Brown and our whole entire staff and our entire team, when we're making that decision, those are some long conversations. Those are some deep conversations as well. But we always try to move in what's the best interest of our school district for the safe and healthy, safe and wellness of all our staff and students. So that, that will be touched on again at, when Sharonda, Mrs. Farrington, I should say, will present.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Any other further questions? I guess one question I do have is in relationship to the food. I know that we have it set to where. Individuals can come to the Novak Family Field House to be able to pick up the breakfasts and lunches just in case. Are we also going to have those other, I thought we, well, at least this summer, I know we had other. Sites where people, where parents could come and pick up breakfasts and lunches. Are we just only doing it at the Novak Field House? Are we gonna utilize those other spaces that we did this summer as well too?
Right now, actually, we slowly. Close those sites as the the there just wasn't that participation level. I think at the end, we had one family coming to pick and save and so. We just, we kind of slowly whittle that back just to the field house. And we are continuing that schedule. We had Mondays and Thursdays and that would continue in a in a closure. I would, we'll certainly look at it at that moment. I think, though, part of the reality was that I think a year ago, when this all first broke. People didn't really go anywhere and we kind of all, you know, stayed home. So I didn't want to travel very much at all. So I think that's one of the reasons why we had those remote. Locations around the village. If it was a need, we certainly could revisit it, but I think as of now, we've certainly seen. Steady participation at the at the field house and certainly the the easiest to for our food service staff to prepare the food and get it out to them. But we'd we'd certainly examine it if we if we saw a closure certainly of long term or that we felt that the families would would significantly benefit from having a remote location.
Thank you very much, Kevin. Any other board members, any other questions? All right, thank you. Excellent presentation and and good job. Let's go on to item D, our athletics and activities update. Let me see, here we go, Dr. Kelsey Brown.
Little little odd for me to be speaking on athletics, but. It is quite all right. I just wanted to include this as an agenda item tonight. First, I would like to share with the board that tonight is the night. Mr. McGregor is being inducted into the Hall of Fame in the Beloit School District. And so if you get a chance to send him an email or see him. Please congratulate him this evening. So that is where he is. And so I just wanted to provide, so in his absence, I wanted to just provide a brief update. On athletics and activities as we continue to expand our offerings to our students from a K twelve perspective. I just wanted the board to understand that there will be many opportunities. Hopefully, over time, it will lessen, but right now we're noticing on the level at which we have to pivot. Around activities for for sports in particular. Case in point, on Friday, we were scheduled to have a football game here with Shoreland. High School and we had to pivot as a result of. Referees, there were some issues or concern with referee or referees who would have come to us on that Friday. And so as a result. Rather than not allowing our students to play, we pivoted to a Saturday and all those individuals who were able to support. A football game on Saturday that was otherwise noted to take place on Friday still took place for our students. So. With that being said, we are making a concerted effort to 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 not cancel. Any activities for our students unless, of course, this is related to a COVID positive case and then we have close contacts. That's a different conversation. But when we're all safe and healthy, our goal is to keep our students playing and engage in the activities moving forward. The other example of pivoting, as we talk about transportation, was just yesterday. Where we almost thought we might would have had to forfeit our volleyball game. We had a volleyball game with Riverside. High School because of because of the transportation with the bus drivers, but notably, we were able to. Rev up our vans, our two vans, and I do believe a few parents drove as well. And our girls were able to play in that tournament on yesterday and took second place. So we are just, I just want everyone to understand that the pivoting that's necessary. In order to continue with some level of consistency as we continue to move forward with. With our in-person learning, number one, but also making sure our kids are engaged in activities and athletics as we continue to. Promote educating the whole child. What I will also do is include athletics and activities as an agenda item. For the board meeting as well, so that Mr. McGregor could also provide some additional. Information regarding on where we are, but all of our sports, our fall sports are in tow. At this point, and that's good news, and I will not add a but, Dr. Beetle, because there is no but, we just don't keep. We just keep on moving forward with getting our kids to where they need to be when we can. Really quickly, I said to the cabinet a couple of weeks ago, we might all have to take a class to get our C D Ls. Our C D, our C D L licenses, because we just want our kids to be able to to continue to come to school. And be able to continue to be involved in their extracurricular activities. So that's just a brief update. I did attend the athletic director's meeting with Mr. McGregor today at Greenfield High School and there's some other. Changes that are coming down the pipe that we will make you aware of upon his return at the board meeting at the end of the month. So there will be lots of pivoting going on and just understand, we do appreciate everyone's grace with. The need to pivot. Sometimes it's a last minute pivot and so we make those adjustments and move accordingly. So it may not be as perfect as we want it. But we are trying to be as efficient as possible with all of these activities that we're trying to implement for our kids. As we continue to move forward. So that is the co- the experience is on top of our regular day to day duties. And so if we appreciate your grace as we we continue to. And your grace and patience, if you will, as we continue to move forward with what we're trying to do. So it doesn't lessen the day to day that we normally had to do. It just kind of heightens what our our work, but we will, we will remain steadfast as we continue to. Get through this school year with some level of consistency for our students, our parents and families. And if there are any questions I might be able to entertain, I'd be happy to do so. And if not, we can ask Mr. McGregor to respond at the end of the at the end of the month board meeting.
Any questions? All right. Thank you very much for that update, Dr. Kelsey Brown, and I do have my C D L, so if you need me, I'm gonna follow all the way.
Right.
All right, let's go on to item number E, our quarantine guidelines. Nurse Farrington.
Hello, everyone. I I will need to share my screen, whoever is the administrator of this. Let me know what I have to do to share my screen. Share screen. Let me know when you can see my screen.
Not yet.
Can you see my screen now?
Yeah, you sure can.
Okay, good. So many have asked about our protocols. So our protocols have not changed very much from last year. The only difference is the addition of vaccinations. That does completely change our world in the middle high school for those that are twelve and up. This is not different from last year, and this says staff. This also means students. This means vaccinated or unvaccinated. So if you test positive for COVID nineteen. So you must isolate when you've been infected with COVID nineteen. So a lot of what you hear is isolation and quarantine. So isolation is used to separate people infected with COVID nineteen from those that are not infected. So quarantine and isolation means slightly different things, although you're at home. So with both an isolation and a quarantine, you're home. If you're positive, you will isolate from ten days from the start of symptoms. If you don't have any symptoms, they call you asymptomatic, then you are isolating from the day you receive your positive test. So with vaccinations, people are having very little, very mild symptoms. And most report none at all. So with those staff and students that are positive. They return to work, to work on day eleven. So when you think about being inside of an isolation, you're inside of isolation. From basically day zero to day ten. On day eleven, if you are fever free without the use of medication for twenty-four hours and you have improved symptoms. Then you are free to return to work, return to class. This is the same guidance that you've been hearing, but I hope this is a little bit better to understand, a little bit easier for you. Now, what has changed for us is vaccinations. So we're speaking of ages twelve and up. You're under twelve, you shouldn't be vaccinated. So if you are fully vaccinated, right, and you've been in close contact. That means you have been within, now this is for adults, because adults use six feet, children in school use three feet. So for us adults, if you have been within six feet of someone. For cumulative total of fifteen minutes or more over a twenty-four hour period, you are considered a close contact. Again, this close contact could be five minutes in the morning. Five minutes at lunch and five minutes at bus duty. If those minutes. Equal fifteen or more, then you will be considered a close contact. Here is the difference. If you are fully vaccinated, that means that you are two weeks from your final dose. Some people took the single dose. That means two weeks after after your single dose. Or two weeks after your final dose. This information for fully vaxxed is the same for students. Although most students that are sixteen and under, they're all taking Pfizer because that was the only one approved for them. So if you're fully vaccinated and you have no symptoms, you do not need to quarantine. So our students that were. Fully vaxxed, they were able to return to school the next day. Here is the difference. Testing is still required. However, you don't need to miss school, you don't need to miss work. Your only requirement is to get a test in three to five days and you have to wear your mask at all times until negative test results. So that means when you're, you don't get to eat lunch with your friends, not and take off your mask, you eat in your car, eat at the curb, eat wherever you can keep your mask on. But in district, you should have a mask on one hundred percent of the time. And this is the big difference. And some people want to know, how else are you a close contact? Okay. Now, some of these things we don't see, you kind of have to tell us, you know, in talking and contact tracing, sometimes I'll hear about these small situations. You drank from a friend's water bottle without thinking. The following day, the friend developed symptoms and tested positive for COVID nineteen. You are a close contact. You're visiting a parent and gave them a hug goodbye. Two days later, the parent tested positive for COVID nineteen after developing symptoms. You are a close contact. I just went over this exact situation with one of my parents. And had to explain, yes, they are a close contact, absolutely. So this is, these are a few situations that people miss when they consider, when they're considering close contacts, but these are all important, close contacts. Now, I know when we spoke before, there was some confusion on how we calculate. Okay, so all of the quarantine that we're speaking of is unvaccinated right now. Because we know that if you're vaccinated and asymptomatic, you don't need to, you don't need to quarantine. So now we're talking all of our unvaccinated staff, students, the entire elementary school body. We may have one twelve-year-old over there, I'm not sure. So here is the breakdown. And I I actually would like to do this one. Well, I'll show you this one. Okay, so. Your first day of contact. So first, we're going to decide if the person is a household contact or not. For this particular example here, we're going to say that the person is not a household contact, okay? Day zero is your day of contact. So on Sunday. You were a close contact, okay? But you don't live with the person. They don't live with you. So you come in contact with them and now you say, oh, Nurse Farrington. I drank out of my grandma's bottle and now she's positive, I'm a close contact. Okay. This is how we count it. Day zero is your day of contact. Day one, day two, day three, day four, day five, day six. Day six is the first day that you may take a COVID nineteen test and it will be accurate. And why? Because it takes three to five days for your body to develop enough antibodies to test positive. So this is the reason you can't test out of a quarantine. If you test it on today and your body doesn't have enough of the virus in it, then you'll test negative. But then maybe on day five, now you have the stuffy nose, now you have the mysterious headache. You would have missed this and you would be probably positive by Saturday, but we would miss it. And this is why I tell parents, do not test before day six. If you test before day six. This result I cannot use, it will be invalid and you will need to take your kid back to testing. Day six or after. So you test on day six. Not many people are doing rapid tests. They'll say it takes a couple of days to get your results. You can return on day eight because quarantine is seven days. So you're inside of quarantine. Day one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. On day eight, with a negative test, you may return to school or work. Some families say, well, I don't want to test, it's invasive, I don't want to do it. And that is absolutely fine. I'm okay with whatever choice parents make. If you choose not to test, then you will continue on day eight, nine and ten at home. On day eleven, you may return to school or campus. And you say, well, why, Sharonda? Because basically what you're doing is you're kind of going into an isolation period. What the C D C says is, from the first day of symptoms. You cannot pass that virus past ten days. So that's why some of the time, the person who was positive comes back before the person who was a close contact. Now, let me show you an example of that. Okay, I actually did this so that you can see it in real time, okay? So I use this week as an example because it will be very easy for you to see, okay? Now, this is if we were a close contact, okay? So say, I'm Dr. Kelsey Brown and I, we are sisters and we live together. Nurse Farrington tested positive. So on the first day of symptoms, we're going to call me day zero. On Monday, I had a sore throat and a headache. I found out that, I could find out later in the week, it doesn't matter. So even if I found out on Saturday, I'm going back to the first day of symptoms. Why? Because you're only going to pass the virus for ten days from the first day of symptoms. So Sharonda is in quarantine from day zero, one, two, three, I'm sorry, I'm in isolation. I'm in isolation for ten days. My tenth day of isolation now, Dr. Brown is home with me, so technically she's home, so. She's home, so you see her ten days, this is my ten days. This is her. So technically, she's now on her day zero of quarantine, but she's home for ten days. I'm going back to school because I am no longer passing that virus. I am fever free and have been since Thursday. And my symptoms have improved and I say, Dr. Brown, I'm sorry, I have to leave you, I'm going back to school. She now gets to stay home for seven days. Now here is her, her day zero, one, two. Three, four, five, six. This is Dr. Brown's first day to test. Day six in quarantine, but a total of sixteen days because she was home the entire time I was home. So she can't test to come back until day six. So day seven, her last day in quarantine. Okay, day eight, she's able to return to school with a negative test, okay? So let's go back. Mommy says, Dr. Brown. You cannot take a COVID nineteen test, you're gonna have to ride this out. I don't think COVID nineteen tests are real. I don't think COVID nineteen tests are real. So I'll say, that's okay, you don't have to produce a COVID nineteen test. You need to stay home for ten days. So for her, it will be her ten days and my ten days. So she goes, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. On Monday, she returns to school, no proof of test is required at that point. So people say, well, gosh. Some of these quarantine children stay out for a long time. And they do. And what I see from being a contact tracer is. I would say, if I just had to throw a number out there. I would say sixty or seventy percent of close contacts eventually turn positive. This is what I see. So you have the kid home because of mom and then we'll get a call somewhere in here. Oh yeah, you know, our little kid now is positive. And I say, yeah, I know, that's probably right. We'll see you back at school. On Monday, the fourth. So same calculations. So by the time they come back, they've done an entire isolation period for themselves and an entire isolation period for their parents. So the other thing that I wanted to show you. Is an example of a letter that parents get. It's full of words. A lot of parents have a difficult time getting through all of these words, but it's important that we put them in. So they receive a letter that says, dear parent. Your child has me, has been identified as a close contact of a person in the classroom who tested positive. It gives them a return date. Um, it gives them the first date that you can test. Which is here. We talk about our onsite testing with Health Connections. Um, if they want to test, they usually have been sending an email to the district nurse. If they want to test, they also will have to. Sign a consent form. So you press on the consent form and it shows you that Brown Deer along with Health Connections. And the COVID Division is offering testing. What is it? Um, how will I find my results? So we have here, we're doing both a rapid test and a PCR. So the rapid test, we find out results within fifteen minutes. That means that they let me know, hey, Sharonda, you have something going on, talk to these parents. And then they are followed up by test results by email. So everything that I send my students to do, I also do for myself. Two Fridays ago, I said, all right, ladies, you have to test me. I went in, I was tested, I had a quick result within fifteen minutes. And when I woke up, I want to say it was forty-eight hours later, I did have my results in my email. That had same information for me. So. People, the parents are getting this information in their email. And it tells them kind of what, what you should do. And our parents have been really good with calling to the school. About their kids being ill or someone testing positive, our Brown Deer parents are amazing. So with this, they fill out the student's information, the race, the parent, and, and this information is here because. In the web system, the Wisconsin. System that they input the results in, these, this is important information that they need for their documentation on the Wisconsin side. Um, and then the parents have the opportunity to sign this and submit. When they submit this, I get a copy in my email that our student has consented. And Health Connections also get a copy. So, um, this letter continues on, uh, more information and is, um, has the number to, uh. The Health Department because we work closely with them as well. And then I wanted to show you one other thing, you had asked a question. You had asked a question about, uh, when we close. So like Mr. Garrison said. When we decide to close a district, it is a huge decision and it's based on more than just. A percentage normally. And so now with, um, the addition of the vaccine. My hope is that we never have to close the middle high school at all. Because the more, um, as we go, I'm seeing more and more children being vaccinated. And so this is from the North Shore website, and as you can see, it kind of tells community trans, transmission level. Um, by school district boundary. And if you look at ours, we're the only one in here with substantial transmission. Um, so. Looks like everyone around is high and we are substantial. And so when you go down a little bit more, it talks about our residents who received their first dose. So we are lower on this at sixty-four point eight eight. Um, and so, you know, I have conversations with students and parents all the time about, you know, the importance of vaccination. Um, and so hopefully we'll continue to have these conversations. Because the higher this number is, hopefully, um, the less often we'll have to quarantine students. So hopefully some of our twelve and over students are in this group. And so hearsay says that, um. Twelve and under, under twelve vaccinations should be coming about. Late October, November. Now that is hearsay, the news, I don't have any, you know, inside. Um, information, um, but hopefully it is coming. And so that will change the game for us at the Brown Deer School District because. Parents will have a choice for vaccination or not. So if students are out quarantined, you know, could be medical, religion, it still will be the choice that the parents will have. So I know I have provided a lot of information. Does anyone have any questions?
Let me just, um, chime in for a moment, um, Ms. Farrington, thank you for your presentation. Um, just wanted to, um, share with the board, uh, we continue to, as it relates to. Going back to our entire virtual experience, as Mr. Garrison and Ms. Farrington stated. Our ultimate goal is to not have to do that. Um, but we are also mindful of the possibilities with the change, um, in the variant, that the potential is there for that to have to occur. So if you recall from last year, um, one of our thresholds was understanding. Um, we were looking at a ten percent on staff absence rate. In each one of our buildings to determine if indeed there will be a need for us to return to virtual. Um, given the, given that, um, we do have staff who are vaccinated, we haven't seen that just yet. Um, but that's one of the measures, um, Ms. Ashley. Um, that we would use to, um, if we, if we are unable to fully staff or have, um, have staff members. In front of our students, um, to continue the, um, instruction that is necessary, um, then that would be. Uh, uh, that would, uh, cause us to press pause, um, and then return to an entire virtual, um, experience. Now that could be by building. Um, but it could also be district-wide. Um, if, if that indeed is what, what has to happen. So. Um, that, that is our threshold, as it was mentioned from last year as well. So we look at staff absences and try to, and we look at staff, staff absences daily. Um, and ensure that we can have staff in front of our students as we continue to move forward.
All right, questions? Any board members, any questions? Go ahead, Lisa.
Yes, uh, thank you, Ms. Farrington. Um, I believe you had said the six days is the first time you can be tested after close contact. Is that the same number of days? If you have experienced symptoms?
So, um.
And so you didn't know if you had close contact, so you just start experiencing symptoms?
So, and that I didn't want to address two things. So with that, if you are symptomatic here at school or at home. The expectation is. You either go and get a negative test or you stay home for ten days. So either way, we need to know that you're not passing that virus. So we have many kids that come in through the health office and. You know, they say, hey, you know, I'm stuffy and I have a headache. And we'll call the parent, we'll say, hey. Um, I have to send, you know, little student home. Um, he's got two symptoms and with two symptoms, we need proof of a negative test. Or he, he has to stay out for ten days. And so that is what we're doing and. Most of our parents, I would say, so far ninety percent of them, even higher, they will have their student tested. To return and I don't allow them to return with symptoms, they have to have improved symptoms and a negative test. And then I did not mention anything about having COVID in the last ninety days. If you were COVID positive in the past ninety days. You are treated as a vaccinated person. So you follow the vaccinated, um, guidelines.
Anyone else have any que-
Yes, Ms. Farrington, I just wanted to touch back with Lisa's question. Just, um, for a little clarity. So if I don't have close contact, again, as Lisa stated. Um, and the test doesn't show up. Positive for after, um, six days, but I'm experiencing symptoms. Wouldn't my test then show? Because you, you indicated that if I'm experiencing at least two of the symptoms, you should go get tested. But if it's not before the six days and I get tested. It will show negative if I'm understanding correctly. But if I show you a negative test. Then you're saying that I'm able to come back to school. But I still have the symptoms. And thus I'm still able to pass the virus.
Okay.
Am I not understanding what you're saying?
So this is how many ways you can break down COVID nineteen. If you are a close contact, okay, so let's go back to my scenario with Dr. Brown and I being siblings. She's positive, I'm quarantining. If at any point during my quarantine that I begin to have symptoms. I am now a probable and I get treated like a positive and I now move to positive status, which means that. I need to now start a ten-day isolation period from the first date of symptoms. So if you are, so it's basically that place where. I live with the virus. And now I'm symptomatic. Even if my test shows negative, well, I'm living with the virus. So it's probably the virus that I have as opposed to. An ear infection or something else. So if you are a close contact. That goes on to have symptoms, you are now a probable case. In that manner, I treat you as a positive case. Even if your test shows negative. You will stay out for the entire duration of ten days from the start of symptoms. So that's the one piece, if you're a close contact that goes on to be symptomatic. If you are not a close contact. And you say, come to the health office and I say, hey, is anyone in your family. Um, positive for COVID, is, are any of your friends positive for COVID? Do you know anyone in America right now positive for COVID that you've been around? And they say, no, I woke up with a headache and a sore throat. That kid will get ten days and a negative test. If that child in five days produces or a day or two or three produces a negative test. And they are improved symptoms, they can return.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So Nurse Farrington, I have a question for you in terms of the proof of test and. So when you have a student who has been quarantined and they're coming off quarantine and they're ready to come to school, right? Um, do they have to show proof of a negative test? And yeah, the, are, are you asking students to screenshot it? Are they bringing, you know, an email from Health Connections indicating that. They tested negative? How, how?
So if they-
What's the golden ticket to get back in?
So if you tested with Health Connections, be it at home, be it at school, be it on campus, be it outside. If you don't have to show proof because Health Connect, Health Connections will contact me directly. So they may not tell the parent or the student that they're negative or positive because we're, the volume is high. But if they, if there's any issues, Health Connections will come to me directly. If you choose not to use our site vendor, then yes, you need to provide proof. Of a negative test, that could be via an email, that can be via a screenshot, that could be via a piece of paper from the testing site. I have the ability to go into the web system and verify everything. I can go into the Wisconsin immunization and verify immunizations. So. Everything is verifiable. I do not take home tests as proof of testing period.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much, Nurse Farrington, for your presentation.
Uh, Dr. Beadle, may I just say a great big thank you to Sharonda and team? Um, I just want to, again, well, share with everyone, this process is all-consuming. Um, and all encompassing, uh, all encompassing and can literally take up her whole day. Um, with contact tracing. Taking phone calls from parents, working with our staff, um, in the health, in the health rooms. And so. Uh, we will continue to examine the, this process and understand if there's a need to add any additional resources. Um, to this process until ultimately what I have shared with, um, our team here is. As I see how this process has, um, evolved over time. Our answers are people getting vaccinated, which we highly recommend. And, uh, testing often and frequently. But I, I think that's where we are, um, in this process in order to ensure that we can keep everyone safe and healthy. And keep our students in school, of course, with the exception of the younger ones who do not have access to a vaccine just yet. Um, but I felt the need to put that out there, um, because what it looks like day to day. Uh, in doing this work is almost unfathomable. And, um, unbelievable to some extent that we're still in this process at this time. As we thought, bringing, we thought we would be on a downshift, uh, with this experience. So I felt the need to share that with everyone. Um, it is, sometimes we go until nine thirty, ten o'clock at night. With these conversations to make sure we are, we have accurate information and we're making sound decisions. So thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Dr. Kelsey Brown. Uh, let's go on to item number four, engaged and innovative staff, approval of new hires, Mr. Clemmie.
Uh, good evening again. Um, fortunately, our hiring is slowing down as this school year started. We have just one new hire. It's Gregory Bond as a, uh. Special education teacher at the middle high school.
All right. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the hiring of Gregory Bond?
Dr. Beadle, I'd like to make a motion to approve the hiring of Gregory Bond. As a high school special education teacher for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Peterson. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second, Dr. Beadle.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Ashley. Move, motion moved and seconded. Uh, any discussion? All right, all in favor with raise hand and or eye? And seven. All right, motion carries unanimously, seven two zero. I will welcome Mr. Gregory Bond as our high school, uh, special education teacher. All right, let's go on to, um. Item B, approval of resignations, Mr. Clemmie.
And unfortunately, we did have one as well. Um, Nicole Anderson, a special education teacher at the high school, uh, submitted her resignation. Her last day will be September twenty-fourth. We did receive, uh, liquidated damages today, so I am bringing her name to the board for approval tonight.
All right. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the resignation of Nicole Anderson?
Dr. Beadle, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resignation of Nicole Anderson as a high school special education teacher. effective September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you very much, Ms. Smith. Motion has been made. Do we have a second?
Dr. Beadle, I'll second.
Thank you very much, Nicole. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing that all in favor with raise hand and or eye? All right, motion carries nationally, seven two zero. Uh, we would wish, we wish Ms. Anderson. Uh, much success in her new career and as we always say, once a falcon, always a falcon. All right. Let's go on to our next item, uh, item number five. Let's go on to our next item, uh, item number five, engage board and community to lead. Uh, so. Um. Our budget hearing and annual meeting will be September twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. Uh, it will be held in the middle school South Commons area at six P M. So all residents must be present in order to vote. Again, you must be present in order to vote. You cannot do this, uh, virtually. All right? So everyone, all community members for this annual budget hearing and the annual meeting on September twenty-third. At six P M in the middle school South Commons, you must be present in order to vote. All right? Uh, any questions in relationship to that? Uh, Dr. Kelsey Brown and Mr. Clemmie, uh, do we have whom is going to, uh, run the meeting for us?
Yes, we are, uh, working on two community, two community members, um, who have, um, said yes. Uh, to help us facilitate the process.
All right. All right, thank you very much, because this is one that the school, the school board does not run this meeting. This meeting is actually ran by community members. Because it is our budget hearing and annual meeting. And we vote just like all citizens of Brown, of the village of Brown Deer, and we vote in person. Okay. All right, thank you very much. All right, uh, let's go on to item number six. Uh, would someone like to make a motion to move into closed session?
Dr. Beadle, this is Lisa. I'll make a motion to move into closed session to discuss personnel matters pursuant to state statute nineteen. Point eight five, parent one, Ramsey.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Zalinski. A motion has been made. Do we have a second?
I will second, Dr. Beadle.
Thank you very much, Ms. Peterson. All right, motion has been made and seconded. Uh. Do we need to do roll call vote? All right, our, our wonderful, uh, clerk.
Beadle.
Aye.
Daniels, Ashley.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Robinson, aye. Smith.
Aye.
Zick.
Aye.
And Zalinski.
Aye.
All right. It goes seven two zero. Thank you very much. And, uh, we will go into closed session and. I'm sorry, Ms. Zalinski.
Sorry, I think we're doing it where we're just. Only in-person participating in the closed session, correct?
Yeah, um. Hold on one second, please. All right, we were ready to go into closed session, um. Nicole? We. All right, we will be sending you something shortly.
Got it.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for, for attending our board meeting this evening. As always, remember to stay safe. God bless. Thank you for spending time with us and enjoy the remainder of your evening and have a wonderful remainder of your week. Thank you.